All right, good evening. It's Tuesday, August 13, 2013, and this is a public hearing on proposed changes to the district code of conduct for the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. And I'm going to turn over the hearing to Superintendent Joe Fair.
Sure. We are required by Commissioner's regulation to provide an opportunity whenever we do our annual review of our code of conduct if there are any suggestive changes to be made to allow people who might be interested in commenting to do so. To be honest, in probably 10-plus years we've been doing this, we have rarely, if ever, had an outpouring or even a person, I think, other than members of the press be here. But we were required to do that, and at least this gives us an opportunity by recording this for PAN to review what the changes are. Again, some years, the changes recommended by the stakeholder committee that the regulation requires to review the policy and make suggestions has a lot, and sometimes the changes are minimal. This year is, I think, more on the minimal side of things. There are several items that the committee recommended that we change regarding the student dress code. There's a section of the student dress code that addresses the length of shorts and skirts. Currently, the policy says that they should not be shorter than mid-thigh. The committee is recommending that we change that to say that shorts and skirts should not be of a length as to be materially disruptive. We don't spend our time with a tight measure, measuring that kind of stuff, but actually use the overall guideline for student dress code issues that's in the regulation, which states that if it's materially disruptive, then it's problematic, and we deal with it. So they're suggesting we make that change, and it's probably as much a nod to the fact that parents of young female students just flat-out have a hard time purchasing, finding shorts and skirts that are mid-thigh or longer. So this is father of three boys, I can't really relate to that, but I'll take their word for it. The next recommendation that's being made is to the section that addresses possession and/or use of tobacco in any form on campus or at school functions as a violation of our code of conduct. The committee recommended that we include electronic cigarettes in that as part of that infraction. In fact, I heard apparently there's legislation that's been introduced that would address electronic cigarettes and specifically would ban them from schools and school camps. It hasn't passed, it's just been introduced, but it seems like that's the way some people are thinking. On the next page is the third item that the committee is recommending, and that is regarding the penalties for gambling. And I think what the administrators are finding anyway is that gambling is being interpreted rather broadly by members of the staff, even when there's no money involved. It's just it's a game of chance, like cards, but they're not playing for money, and some people are interpreting that as gambling, members of the staff, that is. And our administrators would like to expand the range of consequences for that offense. Currently, gambling requires, you know, suspension, and I think they're feeling that if we broaden the available consequences, starting with, you know, parent contact and kind of work through the progression of discipline, that that's a little more reasonable and allows the administrators to tailor the consequence toward what actually is happening. So again, nothing too wild and crazy, but several items that our committee has recommended that we consider changing. And we've done a first reading at our last meeting in early July with those changes made, so we would be doing a second reading tonight. And if that's approved by a unanimous vote of the four board members who are here, then that would include those changes in the code of conduct in time to be able to let parents and kids know that those changes are in effect as of the beginning of the school year.
All right, thank you.
Let's low down.
Anyone have any questions? It's a public hearing, any members of public? No? Okay. And that committee is comprised of several teachers, administrators, and parents.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And a student, a high school student is a member of that as well, yeah.
And is convened for this very purpose, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, there being no other questions or comments, then I close this hearing.
Good.
And we'll take a short break, and then we'll resume our regular meeting at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening again. This is a meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. It's Tuesday, August 13, 2013. May, I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 9, 2013 annual organizational and regular meeting.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by?
Seconded.
Deirdre. Any amendments to those minutes? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We now have an opportunity for public comment. Any comments in the public? Okay, we're passing on that. Then we move to reports and discussion, and the first item is our 2013-14 board goal development process. So we, people had sent, emailed me ideas about board goals. The board had a workshop on a variety of process issues, and we touched upon board goals at that workshop. So I tried to take what people's ideas had been thrown around and just try to collect them into a few, at least to get sort of the categories that board goals might fall into. The wording is definitely a work in progress. I tried to look, just literally open up what people's ideas were and some of the thoughts that come out of the workshop and say, okay, like where would this maybe work? I don't feel like we've had like a full enough conversation with everybody to really work out wording, so these are sort of just my thoughts, based on what little information. And then I took some of the suggestions from board goals and thought, well, they might go better really directly into a committee. And so suggested that. I will say, you know, one piece of feedback I got from Diane Lyons, who can't be here tonight, is she recalled that maybe at our workshop, we talked about possibly reviewing our mission and vision statement, and would we want to make that a goal. I don't recall like a longer conversation, I feel like that happened sort of the end of the workshop, so I'm not sure what people feel about that. And so here's what I, you know, we can talk about it to the extent the four of us can, and then what I'm thinking the process will be, though, is whatever other input from us tonight, or from people who are away and can't be here, that we can get ahead of our meeting on the 27th, try to work on adding, changing, editing, refining it as much as we can, and certainly with input from Joe as well. And then, you know, but the fullest conversation won't really be until the 27th, when we're all here. But I open it up now for any comments or thoughts at all about it right now, so see if we're maybe even headed in the right direction. Mark?
Well, I haven't really had a chance to fully digest these because I just have reading them now, they came out this afternoon, but I mean, it looks like a good start, so I would, you know, have to have had some time to thoroughly think about it and maybe make a comment or two, but I mean, it seems like a good start to the goals for this year.
I agree with Mark. Just a question about some of the past board goals that we've read, and I think I mentioned it at one point. During some years, we had, how do we do this? You know, these are the goals, and then how do we hope to accomplish these goals? And that seemed to be to be a nice way to direct the end result, as opposed to creating a goal and then maybe not really having any defined way of measuring.
Right.
Having reached it. I don't know how we feel about that, why it was done in the past and then not for other years, or if that's something we want to include again this year.
Yeah, no, I remember that was one of your suggestions, and partly I thought, as I was doing it, I was very mindful of that and the issue of do we do, how specific do we get versus how general? And we talked about that at the workshop, too, sort of what's the board's role, setting a vision or specifics. I didn't, I tried to just take the ideas, and I thought, well, let's look at what categories, and then figure out, are there specific things that we want to see happen? I mean, I think it is, it can be helpful, I think, I don't want to speak for Joe, I think finding that right balance is important because you want to know if people have, if the board has something very specific they want to see accomplished, then you want to know about it.
Well, and as I look at these, just to that point, the technology and food service goals, as they're drafted here, are pretty focused, pretty specific, and actually have embedded in them things that are going to be done. Development of an action plan, hire a technology director, so they're pretty specific. The other, the first two are more general, so I, you know, I would lobby one way or the other to either go broader and perhaps have indicators underneath them, or to go leaner and embed the indicators right in there. So I, that's kind of the way I see these chunking out. We could either go with the format of the first two, which are broader, but add the indicators to them, or rework the first two to look more like the technology, and the food service one, and really get them compact and build those. I mean, I think either one of them would work for me in terms of, because actually, even as I'm sitting here rereading these, I know what the last two mean, and I know what the outcomes are going to be for those, because they're pretty much spelled out. I look at the communication when I'm trying to think, so exactly what does that mean?
Right.
What do board members want to see as the outcomes under that one? It's less clear to me, and I think the less clear it is, whether from the goal itself or from the indicators that might support that goal, the more, you know, we're going to take this into administrative meeting and sit there and say, what are you supposed to do with that one? We know what we're supposed to do with this one, that's real specific. That one, eh, not so much. So I guess, I like to see it go one way or the other, but either way, if there is some specificity to the outcome, that gives us something to really focus on. And I think at the end, excuse me, Deirdre, at the end of the year, when we're sitting around talking about did we meet our goals, you could say, yeah, we hired a director of technology, and this person has already done this, 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 and this, and yes, this person's already drafted an action plan for technology for the next three to five years. Okay, yeah, we accomplished that. It's clear. So I, that would be my two cents worth at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with you, Joe, that the first two categories are broader, but I think there's a way that we can probably, through continuing discussion with all members, come up with what the indicators you're looking for to kind of translate some of the goals into things that actually could be achievable within one year. But also, it strikes me, again, as someone who was really an outsider observing the work of the board, that certain kinds of goals often take several years of planning, discussion, and to really launch something that's going to be successful. So having that kind of differentiation in the indicators perhaps might be useful. You know, we see this as a short-term goal that we might realize, or in consultation with you, Joe, and with the administrators, this seems like a feasible goal for a one-year time period. This is a two-year goal or a three-year goal, you know, just have that sense of what is feasible. And also in terms of prioritization.
So, and how about, how about the categories? I mean, if people have a sense. I know, again, I mean, you guys are new, although I will say you've been in a lot of meetings. And, you know, do we think that's in the right direction? I mean, for communication, there were several comments under board goal ideas about communication.
I think that's a very important category.
Yeah.
If we can figure out a way to hone it, to help the administrators.
Right. And some of the struggle I have is figuring out how to hone it so that we're supporting something the administrators do.
Yeah.
But not necessarily direct, you know, finding that balance, sorry, directing you in something that's overly specific, that we actually haven't even really talked about, or it's just like an idea, but it's not, it's not something that's our job to implement. It's just try to find that balance, so. And communication, as you could see from previous years, has been a board goal for a while, so.
Yeah.
As curriculum.
Yeah.
I mean, those are kind of perennial goals, and technology and food service, even though we've talked a lot about them, probably more seriously about food service over the last couple of years, technology maybe for a longer period of time. I think for the first time, these goals are really getting down to something very specific. And I think, given the discussion we've had about technology and what the board, the commitment that the board has made financially to put money into our budget to support that, I think not to have a goal addressing technology would send kind of a funny message, you know? It's like, they're that serious about technology, but it isn't even one of the board's goals.
Right.
You know, what's with that? And Deirdre made a good point that I'd want to emphasize, especially for the two of you as new board members. I think we found that the goals that the board sets really do send a message to the staff.
Mm-hmm.
And I think by and large, many of the staff take that vision that the board lays out in its goals pretty seriously. If it's technology, then that sends a powerful message to the staff that it's not just about dollars and cents, but it's also about a philosophical commitment to want to advance the district.
Right.
And be serious about moving our technological capacity forward. So don't underplay the importance of that message to the staff. I think it is, it's key.
Well, if people feel like at least the categories seem reasonable and like reflect what, you know, our colleagues as well have been thinking, you know, what I can do is begin to think about reframing them so that they're more specific, but that I think we'll need to have more, like, I'll need to have more input from people about what specific ideas they have about, you know, we've talked about web, teacher web pages and their use, but, so, you know, maybe that's something specific we want to look at. Actually, some of them do intersect with technology, I have to say. That was one of my challenges, for example.
Absolutely.
You know, people, I think it was mentioned maybe by three people, is board ideas about solidifying partnerships with community organizations and local colleges and universities. And, you know, one thought is how that could happen, maybe using electronic communication more substantially, using our website more in a more robust way to provide professional development opportunities. The intersection between that and technology, though, is, you know, obvious, but maybe one goal informs the second, that other goal of technology, if we. Go ahead, whoever was first, I don't know who was first.
I'd also say that technology is ultimately going to have a connection with curriculum and Common Core, right? Because the ability to support the kind of testing that will be coming down the road for us, if I understand it correctly, it will require sufficient.
Right.
Infrastructure in terms of our technology in the school district. So technology really is going to be woven into, I think, both of those concerns with communication and with curriculum.
And I was just going to add that, you know, the 21st century learning goal has been on the books for a long time, and as Deirdre said, it does sort of inform all of these things. You know, for food service, it's the point-of-sale system, and, you know, in technology, it's obvious with the self-automated communication, you know? It's just how do we speak more broadly to our community and our parents and our faculty? And so I think, you know, to weave 21st century learning specifically into each goal, and rather than having a 21st century goal.
Right. Which I guess maybe shows that we're making some progress on that goal, actually.
Yeah, in terms of whether those are the right four things, I guess, you know, the question I would ask, and ask you to ask, is, is there any more important or pressing need that rises above any of those four? Because if there is something that the board feels we really need to do that is of paramount importance, then it should be on that list. I mean, there will always be more things than we can reasonably list and accomplish. I mean, there will always be a bucket full of things, important things to do, but I think this is an opportunity to really focus on the two or three or four most important, most critical things that we want to accomplish. And if we walk away from those four headings and say, no, that's, those are the most important things we can do in the coming year, then I think those topics are worthy topics. If we're sitting here and saying, yeah, but I think this is maybe more important than that, then that ought to come up now before we finalize this, and not just as an add-on, we'll just throw that in as a fifth item or a sixth thing.
Right.
Because now we start to get to a list that's unwieldy. It's just we're not going to get real quality and real meat out of any of them if we have too many on the plate. So I think that's, to me, that's the acid test, is, is there anything more important that we need to accomplish this year than those four things?
Well, so, so this has been helpful, and I'll just send these out again to everyone with sort of maybe a few adjustments or notes based on this, because I know Diane, Diane and Lisa are away. So we'll see what, and from all of you, as we mull it over, I would just encourage that if you have any specific ideas, and Joe as well, that you want to, you know, this is sort of how we've operated, like, the board president can be the repository for all the ideas, you can send it to everyone, or just send it to me, and then I'll try to keep sort of working on it, and hopefully we'll have another draft to discuss at our next meeting. Because I think it would be good if we could feel comfortable enough with what we have that the first meeting in September, we can, we can vote on them. That might be ambitious, depending on how much feedback people are able to provide between meetings, but that would be a nice goal. When we have the goals set at open house, and we can articulate those goals to parents, I think that's a nice thing to be able to do.
And this year, the middle school open house is later. It's always been like the first Tuesday after school starts, and it's always like, it seems like it's.
Too early.
So for whatever reason, John mentioned to me, there's a reason, but for some reason, it's a little later, so we don't have a lot of extra time.
Okay.
But I think we have a little more wiggle, maybe.
Okay, great. All right, well, thanks, everybody. We'll just keep working on this. Our next item is discussion of paperless Board of Education meetings, which I believe Lisa originally maybe had requested, or Lisa and Lauren to be on the agenda. And there's been some information Meg provided us in our packets. I guess, you know, one of my thoughts about this is, I think we've all come to realize, is that there are a lot of, there are various issues. So last year, this was taken up, and Paul Slaton took it upon himself to do some research about what people's expectations were of a board packet, what you needed out of that, and then costed out various possibilities. And it was the conclusion at the time, you correct me, Mark, I'm wrong, that the cost differential was so great that we weren't even going to go down that road, because it was so much less expensive to just do the paper packet. And it provided everyone with what they needed, which was flexibility, portability, ease of use, easy to take notes, et cetera. But it's fine that there's initiative to take another look at it, certain of those costs have changed, but I think it would be most useful if we hand it over either to a committee on an ad hoc basis or a standing committee, because the issues are so, you know, we need someone to do kind of, I think, what happened last year, is like, put all the information in one place, the different items, and then present it. That's kind of how we operate. So does that seem like a reasonable way to approach it? I'm not sure where it might fit naturally, or whether we want to see whether like last year. The other issue I want to bring up is that Meg is only with us as a clerk for undefined, but hopefully for her sake, short period of time. And I don't want to abuse the time that you're giving us essentially as remaining as board clerk to do an enormous amount of work on this project when you're transitioning yourself. So I want to be sensitive to that as we think about, you know, where we're going with this. So, you know, the model could be for a board member or two to take it on as last time, or put it into a standing committee. I don't know if anyone has a. I'm not sure where it would go as a standing committee.
I don't know that it fits naturally into any of the ones that we have currently. I think it would need to be an ad hoc committee of people who are interested in it. And I think there's a lot of, there's a benefit for using that committee structure, because we've tried, in some issues you have to, but it's unwieldy having seven people come up with a.
Have.
Yeah, so it's much easier for two or three people, for subcommittee of the board, to look at the work, do the grunt work around a smaller table, and say, you know what, this is our best recommendation, let's put it out there and see how the full board responds. And then maybe the full board says, you know what, we're not interested, thanks.
Right.
For the work, but we're still not ready for it. If that's a consensus, then so be it. I think it's a more efficient way to get that work done.
Yeah. So we can't sign anyone up who's not here, or we can. The minute's up.
That's the best way to do it.
I know you have some interested in it, but I'm not going to ask you, like, if you want to, but do you have an interest in working with Lisa perhaps on it?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Because I know you both had mentioned it, but I'm not putting you on the spot. Like, you could also say no.
I know Lisa's interested in it. I'd be happy to work with her to.
Okay, assuming Lisa agrees to it, then maybe what we could do is ask you two to just take all that information. What I can do is I did get a copy, Meg, of, Paul sent me sort of his files on it. Light slicker, right? And I can give you those files from Paul, the work he did and the format he did.
That'd be great.
And basically, if we could just get some succinct sort of feedback from you guys on, here are some options, here are the benefits and drawbacks of the various options, including cost, but ease of use, et cetera. Paul had sort of a matrix, like, I think could be helpful.
That would be great, yeah.
And, you know, the timeline here really is only budget season. I mean, if there are budget implications, then when we begin to do the budget, which we start in December, or maybe even earlier, as we did this past year, you know, that's sort of would be the piece of that.
Yeah, I would say, though, that depending on what the recommendation is and what the will of the full board is.
Right.
If there were a recommendation. If there were a recommendation prior to next school year, depending on what the financial implications are, there may be possibility. So, I wouldn't wanna just say, you know what, we've got another nine to 12 months to kick this around. I would recommend that that committee get to work this fall, perhaps come up with a recommendation by the holidays, at the very least. We can then build that into the budget process, if that's the direction the board wants to go. There may be some things we could start to do during the second half of the school year to move it along. So I just wanna put that
Okay, yeah, sure.
Put that out there. The other thing is that, excuse me, the other thing is that even though Meg will be leaving us shortly as the board clerk, she's unfortunately still stuck as my secretary. So, you know, I would say that she's done an awful lot of legwork on this and is pretty invested in moving this forward, even though it won't directly impact her after-hours work as board clerk, but, you know, she does work here during the school day, and I'm sure if the ad hoc committee wants to tap Meg's brain, that there's no reason to start this process from square one.
No.
And I think, as the board clerk for many years, Meg is, I think, probably the best person.
Yes, that's true.
Much better than anybody we would bring in as a new board clerk to understand what the needs are, what the issues are, what the concerns are. So I would strongly urge that this ad hoc committee keep Meg connected to the project, even if she's not doing the heavy lifting.
Okay, definitely, yeah. Yes.
I'll just say that I don't know how much time I have to serve on a committee, but I'd be willing to provide input at least if, you know, the need arises.
Because you have some
Yeah, I mean, as an IT guy, I do know a little bit about that sort of thing, but
Yeah, well, that's good to know. For questions, sort of, I will say, some of what you share with us, Meg, as not an IT person, I'm a little unclear on what they mean, so.
And it took some time in discussion to understand exactly what the gentleman was talking about in terms of differences in the different platforms and what the implications are, going in one direction versus another. And I'm sure Mark would have understood in a nanosecond.
Right.
What's that mean?
So, and I'll just share with you, I think, you know, Lisa will recall this as well, but since you weren't here last year, I think the two primary issues that sort of led Paul to say, like, it clearly isn't a possibility, at least as things were last fall, were ease of use at the time, you know, whatever the technology is, has to be as easy people's expectations were, because we tried to pilot with laptops that were cumbersome and cost were the big issues. So just, I think it's fair for you to know that that was the conversation last year. But thank you, that'd be great.
I do have one question, just in terms of, I don't know whether it's even a policy question, but it's very specifically, the information is very specifically owned by the district, but Deirdre had brought up a point about, you know, using your personal devices. Is that appropriate if, for any reason, we come up with, you know, tablets versus
Well, I would just say before we, I think that's just one of the questions that you guys have to explore.
Okay.
You know, like
So there's no rule against having people use their own personal devices for, really?
I think the rules are about sort of security and that, as that intersects with personal devices. Or alternately, if we get devices, what does that mean about people having district-owned devices and what are they used for? And so, an ease of use issue, right? You have your device that's, but you can't be doing your personal email on it, you know? So those are the kinds of questions that have to be resolved, right? Which I know you're just dying to.
It's very much a district-specific decision, because some districts have a culture where they will approach use of personal devices one way, and another district may be completely the opposite. There's no, as far as I know, hard and fast rules, because both models, several models are out there. So it's really something for a board to look at in depth and then come to what works here, what do we think is the right way, if the decision is to go.
Right, right, great. Yeah, so there are a lot of issues, right? It'll be fun, yeah. Go to other board meetings, watch how they do it. You must know, right? Okay, well, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, thank you, that's great, and we'll move on then to comments. Does anyone have any good news?
I'll wait till other for mine.
Oh, his, okay, well, did you have good news you wanna share?
Well, I did have some good news I wanted to share about the Rhinebeck Exchange Program, which just concluded about a week ago, and I think Mark will tell us more about it under other, but I simply wanted to say how magnificent it was to see the facility of our schools and also if the auditorium filled the capacity with families from our district and adjacent districts, with the visitors from Germany making music together. It was a truly wonderful cultural exchange, so it was great for our district.
That's great.
And thank you, Mark, for your leadership in all of that.
Yes, I know, Mark, you were quite crickled in that, so. That is very good news. Any other good news? Okay, then we'll move on to old business. I have a couple, so one of them is, Deirdre and I have been working on crafting a letter to parents about the state test scores. And of course, last week, there was lots of media attention to the drop in test scores and what does that mean? And so, we've actually crafted it, we've shared it with Joe, because of vacation schedules and the Germans and whatnot, we're really sort of concluding something that we feel like we can share with our colleagues to see if people feel it's something that the full board can support. And so I would anticipate in the next couple of days, sending out our draft or by the end of the week, that then I'd like to get some feedback from people. It is challenging with people away on vacation, but I'm hoping that we can come to some sort of conclusion about, you know, or some consensus to support a letter like that, that we could send out, perhaps both from the board and from Joe, together, about how we are understanding the Common Core and the state test scores. Joe, maybe you could share with us how the process is for parents to be notified of what those scores are, with their individual scores.
Yeah, and typically, and I haven't received any information to lead me to believe that it's gonna work differently this year, but typically, within a couple of weeks after they, you know, the commissioner releases the information and there's a big, you know, it's a big media event, they will send us the individual scores, you know, the scores for the individual children, and then we will arrange through the Regional Information Center to print out an individual report for each child, grades three through eight, and send, you know, mail them home to the parents. I believe typically there's, if the score suggests that the student needs to receive AIS services, I believe there's a letter that's put in there that says your child will need additional services in mathematics, and that also provides us now with the list of kids who need to receive services, because, you know, while they ramped up the, ramped up the expectations and the scores statewide were, as expected, lower than they've been, to the best of my knowledge, they haven't lowered the threshold for having to provide academic intervention services. And as we had been concerned about during budget time, and we're just starting to process this now, you know, we would anticipate if the scores are lower across the board, that means more children will be required to have that extra service, and that potentially creates all sorts of issues from a staffing perspective, also from a scheduling perspective, because there are only so many hours in the day, and if you have to provide AIS, that means maybe Johnny or Suzie aren't able to take some other course that they would have ordinarily, you know, it gets complicated, and, you know, and some parents are concerned about that, and understandably so. So my guess is that those things will go out within the next couple of weeks. I mean, they're typically gonna go home before the school year starts, because kids need to be placed in, some will need to be placed in AIS, scheduled for AIS. In terms of the timing of the letter, I don't think there's any drop-dead date beyond which it doesn't make sense to send it, but I'm thinking where we're at right now, in a perfect world, if we could get board consensus at the next meeting and be able to send that letter out to our parents at the beginning of the school year, I mean, I think that's the time when everybody's radar is up regarding school stuff. You know, later in the year, other things occupy people, and there isn't nearly the same level of interest and attention as there is at the start of the school year. So I think that would be a good time to, if we can reach consensus as a board on that letter, to send that out to our parents, and it also maybe puts, gives them a context for the scores that they've just recently received. They kinda, it may make more sense to them, given, you know, in the context of that letter, you know, when the letter goes to the State Education Department and Governor Cuomo and the legislature probably is less critical, in my way of thinking, than when parents get it in a way that they can kind of start to connect the dots. So if we could do that, that'd be great. I wouldn't rush consensus on a letter that's that important, just to meet an artificial timeline, but, you know, if it's reasonable to coalesce on this letter at our next meeting and then be able to send it out, you know, right at the beginning of school, I think that would be ideal if it worked that way.
So, yeah, you know, John King also has sent a letter that I don't know if you know, I don't know, like, there's been media attention to a letter he sent to districts, and I'm curious if, and it's to parents, so is there, do you know, or maybe they haven't informed you yet, there's some expectations that districts also attach a letter from the commissioner in that letter, which, just to go further with that, what he seems to be saying is, oh, don't worry, your kids aren't learning any less, but if those students, some huge percentage more have to go into academic intervention services, I'm not, I feel like those two things don't make any sense as far as an educational perspective, so.
Does he explain that letter? Because I see, I'm still catching up on a week's worth of emails here.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so now, well, maybe we can
I'm a little bit behind the curve, but does he
Look into
Explain in that letter why we decide to give the tests a year earlier than we needed to in New York State?
Right. No, he just says, don't worry, the kids aren't learning any less, but then, of course, these kids might be going, your student is gonna be in academic intervention services, and so, I think, you know, I would, in my own world, I would love to be able to send it ahead of the test scores, so parents could understand, have some context before they get scores that they might feel alarmed by. But I realize, we also have people away, and as you said, we don't wanna rush consensus unnecessarily, but I think, you know, I think our hope had been to try and alleviate stress for parents, because it will be stressful for kids who, for a whole number of kids who are going to, unless the state changes its mind in the next couple of weeks, which is always an option on there for their
I'm not hearing that.
Get academic intervention services, so it'll be a challenge for us, but I'd like us to try and get it done as soon as possible, but I recognize that all summer's been challenging with this information. Any questions or comments similar on that?
Joe, how quickly are we able to react to the news of additional AIS requirements and things like that, in terms of moving kids' schedules around?
We'll do it right away, I mean
Well, yeah, but is it cumbersome in a way that might make the beginning of school difficult?
Yeah, I, my sense is not, I mean, it's, you know, our building principals know that this was a potential outcome of that, so it's not like, it's, they're not getting blindsided, but it's obviously, we didn't know what the scores were gonna look like, and generally, you know, we, I think, speaking broadly, we fared better than we thought we might, but still, the context was like, you had no idea how much of a decrease there might be and how it might affect AIS. So, I mean, we reacted a couple of years ago when they changed the cut point on the old tests, pretty late in the game, and we, you know, it didn't ruin our year, and, you know, we responded, and I think we'll be fine. I think our, yeah, our building principals are kind of expecting that they're gonna have to do something, and they'll, I don't anticipate a problem with that. I mean, I think, I think the bigger issue is gonna be staffing. I mean, for example, we're, you know, we're looking to hire a math teacher, and when we hired a teacher earlier in the year at a .8 FTE, you know, Ed talked to me just the other day, and he said, we're probably gonna wanna hire that person as full-time, and had that person teach a couple of sections of AIS, and looking at some of our other math staff, again, just speaking of the high school, because he's the only one I've had this conversation with since I've been back, that, you know, there may be some math teachers that he'll be asking if they would be wanting to pick up, you know, a voluntary sixth class to backfill some of this need. You know, we didn't, we didn't wanna go crazy and budget for a bunch of teachers, not having any idea how much more teaching time we needed, but we, you know, I think we addressed that contingency to a certain extent in our budgets, and now we have to see how the numbers actually fall out and what we actually need. That'll be more difficult, especially if it turns out that we need to hire more people. Again, I don't even know that we're anticipating that at this point, we may be able to absorb it within our, you know, within our current staff with some reorganizing. If it turns out that we have to go out and hire people, it'll take a while to hire people, you know? You post it in the interview, and you guys know that that, you know, there's a good six weeks or so from start to finish on a very aggressive schedule to get new staff, and I don't think we're gonna have to do that, but I'll wait till I get the final word from the building principals.
Right. And, you know, I'll just share on this topic, one of my, you know, one of my many concerns is, you know, children who are gonna be very upset about this, and, you know, we talked about how the tests were given, the administration of the test was highly problematic, forget about the content, but just the administration. And I'm more concerned, I'm less concerned about our staffing capabilities than I am about how the beginning of the school year is for children who are feeling like they're, they have failed something. And, you know, I think we try to keep a really good focus in this school community on, you know, everyone's strengths and values, and like, everyone's trying to do their best, but if wholesale, kids are feeling like, oh my gosh, I'm not a good student anymore, I don't know that I thought I was, you know? That's, that's, that could be a climate issue for our kids, and that's where the most important thing is, especially when you have the commissioner saying, well, they're not learning any less, but I'm gonna tell you, little person, what your time is gonna be like now, and your classroom day that might be really different. And I think, so, and, so I'm wondering if, would the, I don't know what the schedule is for our principals' reports, but if in September, if they could be prepared to let us know how the test scores, the AIS scheduling, staffing issues, how it's all playing out in classrooms for kids and for teachers?
Mm-hmm.
Because I just do find that, this bizarre juxtaposition of the commissioner saying, no big deal, and yet, it is a big deal, so.
Yeah, we'll do that for sure.
Okay, anything else on that topic? You'll get a, you know, we'll send out our letter. Also, I have under old business, just to communicate what Diane Cantares had communicated from the audit committee, that the focus communicated from the Audit Committee, that the focused audit on the lunch program was completed, and at some point, there'll be a presentation from the committee to the full board on that. Do you have any, anyone else have any oath business?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then move on to a second opportunity for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on then to other. Mark?
So I think everybody here knows that I'm the president of the Rhinebeck Exchange Program, at least now, if you didn't before. I would just like to publicly thank the school district for allowing the exchange to use the school facilities. It was really wonderful to, you know, the exchange is a music program, so it's really great to have three rehearsal spaces that can all be going at one time for band, orchestra, chorus, all rehearsing in the same general area, all at the same time for two hours every other day for two weeks. And also, you know, this was my first experience actually managing the Germans' visit, so, you know, to be able to mobilize, you know, 170 people to get dropped off, get on buses, go places, come back, get dropped off again, and then get picked up by, you know, roughly 100 host families, is really great to have the parking facilities and the bus circle and all that, to be able to get all that done. In addition to being able to use the auditorium for our gala concert, which is a really wonderful event, and I meant to bring the picture tonight. I have a picture of the final number, which is all 200 participants up on the stage performing the Brotherhood of Man, the orchestra, the band, and the choir all at once. And so it was a really great picture that we got, so I'll try to remember to bring that next time.
Yeah.
And there will be an article in the Hudson Valley News tomorrow, so.
Oh, great.
You're supposed to pick one of those up.
That's terrific. That is a really, you know, and I think back to our facilities project, and it failed the first time around, and it was passed, and here we are, how many years later, and what a fantastic use of the facilities for something that impacts a lot of the students in our community. I mean, a lot of families and children, so that's sort of, that's a wonderful thing.
And I'll just add, you know, we had a get-together last week, and we were looking at pictures of rehearsals going on in the old Bulkeley Middle School, in the gym over there, you know, and what a difference it is to have, you know, the two rehearsal rooms and, you know, a full auditorium to practice in.
That's great.
Get ready for three concerts, so.
That's wonderful. That's great.
Thank you.
Yes. Well, thank you. Excellent. Any other other? I wanted to, well, just a couple of things I wanted to note in FYI that Joe shared with us, the New York State Master Teacher Program information, and I just wanted to point it out, because a couple of things that came up in board goals ideas, I think one of them might have been from you, Laura, was to, you know, celebrate more staff and student activities and whatnot. But I thought, you know, this might be something people want to mull over as a possibility for some way the district might want to intersect with, like, how do we encourage staff or support staff who might want to take advantage of this opportunity through New York State to become a master teacher? So I just would encourage people to look at it, and as we think, whether it's through personnel or as a goal, or, you know, it seemed to me to intersect in certain ways. And one thing it made me think of also was that several of our teachers have become nationally board certified teachers, and when that first started, teachers in this district doing that, three of the teachers came and presented periodically their work and what the process was like and the importance of the process. And then I didn't really realize that other teachers have been doing it since then. So all of this is my way of saying that this, by you putting this in FYI, Joe, it made me think, gee, as we're talking about trying to support our teachers and professional development and celebrate their accomplishments, maybe we should be thinking about all of this in a more explicit, formal, structured way somehow, because that all seemed to kind of coalesce and sort of take it out of the board packet and bring it more visible. So that's one thing I want to highlight. And then, Joe, you also gave us all a copy of this. Is this from a workshop?
Yes, that was from the Mid-Hudson School Study Council's Law Conference, which happened on August 2nd, and also provided, those of you who aren't at the NISBA Law Conference, with the handouts from that conference, too. So there's a lot of stuff there, but some of it's pretty good stuff, so.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. I just wanted to highlight some of, you know, the stuff you put in FYI is really very useful, and it can be neglected at the back of the book, but I think, basically, it's going to help inform a lot of what we do, so. Any other other? Okay. Then we'll move on to our action items. Does anyone have anything they want to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. They may have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a final reading and adoption of modifications to Board Policy Number 5280, Interscholastic Athletics, and Board Policy Number 5300, Code of Conduct.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Deirdre. Any questions or comments? Laura?
I have, there is a discrepancy between the policy and then what's going in the handbook. I don't want to put my finger on it. The policy is, seems to be striking. Prior to selecting team members, each coach first will establish the maximum number of student athletes able to be kept on the team, based on the requirements, but in 6.2.12, it is still a no.
Okay, well, thanks for bringing that to my attention. Before anything goes in the athletic handbook, I'll make sure you take that direction.
What I was wondering, if there was a reason why maybe the, I mean, which could be an answer, like whether it's different. What's expected in policy might be a little more general versus...
Yeah, I'll go back and review, okay.
Okay. Any other questions about that? I would like to just thank Steve Boucher for the work he did in putting together the whole goals, principles, and philosophy of the program for parents. You know, that was something that the board wanted to see at the beginning of last year, and I think, you know, I just want to share what you share with me, Joe, that that process apparently was a really important process to communicate with coaches, to develop this, is not just good for parents and students, but was a process that I'm hopeful was good for the entire athletic program and the coaches. So I just want to thank Steve for putting in a lot of hours to make that happen. And then, you know, so what we're voting on is 5280. This is actually, you know, for the athletic program, disturbing. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Samantha Robbins as athletic trainer for the 2013-14 school year at a stipend of $28,905 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2013 program curriculum clerical work.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Deirdre. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the district clerk to notify the Department of State pursuant to the requirements of newly enacted Section 53.3 of the General Municipal Law that a copy of every notice of claim served upon the Secretary of State regarding the Rhinebeck Central School District must be transmitted to the office of the district clerk in accordance with the provisions of Section 50-E3F of the General Municipal Law, and be further resolved that the district clerk is hereby authorized to take those actions necessary to complete the filing of the district certificate of designation for service of notice of claim with the Department of State effective July 15, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we move on. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve mentors for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Deirdre. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of David Airstock as District Health and Wellness Coordinator for the 2013-14 school year at a stipend of $4,531 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Fern Lox to the tenured position of Elementary Assistant Principal assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School. A three-year probationary position with an annual 12-month salary of $88,500 prorated, including benefits, as described in the Rhinebeck Administrative Association Agreement effective August 26, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Deirdre. Any questions?
I did have one quick question about the job description that you sent around. It's listed that she's going to do reviews of staff as required by the principal. Is she going to be doing most of them? Do you have any sense of how they're going to break up?
I don't think they'll have a sense of that until we get started. Probably, the building principal will do the majority of them, but part of our intent in creating this position was that that person is going to have to pick up, you know, a good chunk of the slack, and she still needs to be trained in the Danielson 2011 models, so she won't be starting on the first day in September doing that either. She's going to have a learning curve to get up to speed, so. But I don't anticipate it will be the majority of the evaluations, but I think it'll be a significant number ultimately.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Stacy Vandentorn to the civil service position of senior typist with a probationary period of 26 weeks, effective August 19, 2013, at a salary of Step 6, $38,556 prorated, in accordance with the Annie 2012-13 salary schedule.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the fall coaching staff for the 2013-14 school year. Soccer, boys, modified, David Jutton, $2,231. Volleyball, modified, Lisa Kristofick, $2,231. Cross country, boys, varsity, John Lombardo, $3,354. Girls, varsity, Chris Snead, $3,354. Golf, varsity, Ted Salter, $2,722. Field hockey, varsity, Mary Flyshower, $4,381. Swimming, girls, varsity, Crisia Loyola, $4,381.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Deirdre. Any questions? All those in favor?
Oh, sorry. Good question. Is there going to be a JV field hockey?
No.
No, okay.
Yes, and I'm very glad to see we have varsity coach. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the selection of Big Ideas Math Advanced 1 and Big Ideas Math Advanced 2, 2014, Big Ideas Learning LLC, Erie, Pennsylvania, distributed by Hilton Mifflin Hardcore, as the textbooks for the Grade 6 and Grade 7 Accelerated Mathematics courses.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Roberta Anderson as High School Musical Choreographer for the 2013-14 school year at a stipend of $2,299 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Deirdre. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the recommendation of David Airstock to conduct selection, classification, fitness testing for the 2013-14 sports season as necessary.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any questions?
I have a question. Approximately, do we have any idea how many students actually attend to this?
It varies from season to season. I don't, you know, typically, we're not talking about dozens of kids. A handful, usually.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion to appoint Margaret Tadicco as District Clerk pro temp effective July 1, 2013, until a Board of Education meeting following the appointment of a new district clerk.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any questions? Again, thank you, Meg. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution. Be resolved that the superintendent is hereby authorized to direct a comprehensive medical examination and evaluation, including psychiatric, psychological examination and evaluation, if necessary, of employee number 1832 in accordance with the provisions of Section 913 of the education law. Be further resolved that the board hereby directs that employee number 1832 submit medical records, if any, from the last two years, to the school-appointed physician at or before such examination or evaluation.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the resolution to confirm tax rules and authorize the tax levy for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Deirdre. Any questions? Meg?
Oh, no. It's actually the next motion, but I just wanted...
We need a roll call, the next one.
Roll call on the next one, and also, before everybody leaves, I need to get signatures of it.
Okay, great. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to issue the tax warrant to the school tax collector to collect taxes in the total sum of $25,494,160, exclusive of star reimbursements. The tax collector is not responsible for the collection of that portion of the warrant. The collection period begins September 3, 2013, and ends on November 1, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any discussion? Oh, so you need a roll call vote, right. Deirdre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
An aye vote, aye. That motion passes. Okay, then we move on to motion. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve 2012-13 budget transfers in accordance with Board of Education Policy Number 6150 for the school year ending June 30, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. The newest budget transfer items are at your place, if you have any chance to look at those. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept library gift book donations to benefit the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School Library from CLS parents through the Rhinebeck PTSO in the total amount of $1,210, and a mini grant in the amount of $478.05 for the purchase of balloons for the BMS Veterans' Day Assembly, ice cream for the Moving Up Ceremony, and the Field Day Dunk Tank. The total amount of donations is $1,688.05.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Deirdre. Any questions? Well, thank you to the PTSO and to the parents of Chancellor Livingston.
Especially for the Dunk Tank.
And the Dunk Tank, which is a new, which I know our administrators are just so happy to get this donation once again.
I'm hoping for a one-year tradition.
Went up pretty well.
Yeah, that would be great.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the correction of the appointment of two part-time teachers at the July 9, 2013 meeting. The appointment should have read, Fon Johnson, .8 FTE, our teacher, Step 3, BA plus 1. The appointment should have read, Fon Johnson, .8 FTE, our teacher, Step 3, BA plus 1, $43,809.60 prorated. Allison Vacarino, .4 FTE, computer CLS, Step 6, MA plus 3, $26,588.80 prorated.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any questions? Those were just smaller errors, right, from previous?
Yeah.
Just what was highlighted.
Clerical errors, right.
Right, yeah. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May, I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of particular staff.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Deirdre. All those in favor? That's unanimous, we're moving into executive session.